I sent him an email. Hold on, everyone. Let's see if Stacy will join us. One of the issues on our agenda tonight actually is to discuss the size of this board, which is currently set at five. And there are only three seats that are filled, which means that we need all three of us for the quorum, and we need all three of us to unanimously vote on everything. So unless we get two more people, one of the topics for tonight was whether we should be decreasing the board to three in the interim until we have more people who are interested in serving. But this is exactly why that's important.
He's probably stuck in the mud when he's driving.
I was told he was in Florida. Oh. I was told that today about you heard.
Yeah, I don't know what his plans were for tonight.
Just out of curiosity, given the run-in just before, what happens if he doesn't show? Do we have to postpone the meeting?
Well, let's think about that. If he doesn't show, we don't have a quorum for the meeting. So in terms of official business, I don't think we can conduct any official business or take a couple of the votes that we were talking about taking for nominations and areas of next focus. I think we could certainly receive an informational report from the ZA. We can make announcements about the next meeting. But without a quorum, it's not an official meeting.
Are we able to approve minutes without the quorum?
Nope.
Can we actually do anything that doesn't require a vote key?
Yeah, so we can run through the agenda informationally. And we're all here, so we should do that. Still no Stacy, right? Shall we carry on? See if he joins us? What time is it? 7:06. I'm happy to carry on, and if he joins us, then we have a quorum and can make it official. Sorry? Okay. Let's go through our agenda, even though at this point it's informational. Open the meeting such as it is. And any changes to the agenda that we should be considering before we move on? Okay. Let's run through the reports. Mail, there was nothing. Email, we had a couple of emails about Act 250 that I could not open. So I'm going to have to track down the Regional Planning Commission and see if I can open those. Or Jane, maybe you had more success than I did?
I didn't receive them.
They were in the...
They were in the, yeah.
Planning Commission group email.
I didn't check that. I'll check it later. Probably not.
I think those were just Regional Planning Commission informational emails. Bob, there was one request from a resident about altering their barn and asking if they needed a permit, and I directed them to use, so you may see that.
I haven't seen it.
It was just today that I sent it out. Energy Board, I don't think we have anyone reporting tonight. We got a pretty robust report fairly recently. Zoning Administrator is here tonight. And we can... The follow-up on the questions from the last meeting is the next one down, although we could do it here instead if you want.
Well, we can... I'll let you go through the agenda, but as a zoning administrator, just to bring you up to date, I've only had two requests for letters on two properties regarding whether they're compliant in the zoning regs or not. What do they call it? A binachi letter? A binachi letter, something like that. And all it's saying is that there are no lingering issues with any permits or any buildings on the property.
And do those letters get posted anywhere or sent to the ZBA?
Basically, I've always just done this as an email back to the attorney that asked the question.
Does the ZBA get copied on those or have a way to see that for curiosity?
I never had it, but I can.
That'd be great. I would feel more in tune with what's happening. Although I defer to Jane as the chair of the ZBA, but...
Yeah, if you want to know who's got some activity going on with the property, I can...
That'd be great. If you could add us onto the circulation.
White Lines Road and the other one I saw in Town Hill.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, I agree. I would like to be informed.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. In terms of reports, zoning board of adjustment reports. Jane, anything from you in this?
I think nothing going on this month.
Okay. Regional Planning Commission, sorry, I did skip over that. The Regional Planning Commission rep Kathy Rondo gave us a pretty fulsome report last month, so I think we are set for now. Stacy was going to give us a report on archiving prior PCZBA recordings, so we can push that to next time. I think the summary of that is he found a way to archive and save recordings of meetings that were made before Okemo Valley TV took over this function. I'm not quite sure what that is, but he knows what that is, so we will hear next time. We were going to continue discussion of next areas of focus, review of the town plan, et cetera. I don't think that makes that much sense to do tonight in his absence. I would say that I had followed up with Martha Harrison from Mark because she had made a presentation at the Select Board, which some of you heard, with suggestions for the town plan for next time. The town plan does not come due until 2030, so we've got time. Although there's definitely information in there that is outdated, needs editing, could be revised. So I think we will start looking at some of that, although it sounds from Mark, Madison County Regional Commission, as if a lot of it is not ready yet. So there isn't the data yet for the housing chapter, the future land use chapter. Reading is waiting on the state around flood resilience and river corridor regulations. The energy chapter, they were waiting for federal funding, which is frozen. Utilities and facilities could be updated, but by the time the plan actually expires, it probably would need to be updated again. So that's a little bit of a snapshot on why none of that is really ripe yet. Which brings us to follow-up on 419 Bailey's Mills Road.
Current status is I had conversations, verbal conversations with Derek, asking him for some information on, specific information on what he was planning on doing, where he was planning on putting the camping, and how many campers. And he basically, in the last conversation, told me that it was only going to be 25 campers, and they were going to be up behind the house. And he says all the rest of the information is on my posting, which I guess was, if you really want to dig into it. I talked with an attorney about that, and together we drafted a letter that I sent to Stacy, basically giving him two options.
To Chase?
Stacy, I'm sorry, Derek. I sent to Derek, giving him two options. One would be to file for permit application to the ZBA, basically, conditional use permit. I did not give him information on which permit to file, but basically the only two that would fit would be either a permit to hold the... Have the camping, or the request for a variance for a much smaller two-day event. The other option was to move the camping out of Redding. And that was sent out last week. I got an email back on Sunday from Stacy, I keep saying Stacy, from Derek. A little terse, but indicating that let me know that he got the email. We also sent a registered letter. I did not ask Felicity if he had picked that up yet or not, but it's exactly the same letter, so it doesn't matter. And I had the proof that he got the original email. So he had until the 10th, next Monday, to reply. To date, I have not heard a thing. He told me in the letter, in the email he sent back to me, that he would call me, hold on, hold tomorrow, which would have been Monday. Because the email came about 10:30 on Sunday night. I did not get a call, and I have not gotten one. So right now, it's in his hands to either do one or the other or nothing. And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
I don't know. I talked with the attorney today. We have some plans. If nothing happens between now and the 10th, this is how we move forward immediately. But until that happens, I don't want to divulge what the options are at this point in time.
Okay.
So that's where it's at.
Are you willing to take some questions if people have any questions?
Yeah, sure.
Right?
Okay. First of all, I'm confused. I just don't understand why the results of past attempts for him to run a business out of his zone area that's only, that does not allow a business to be run out of there. And I would just want to read from your letter back in January 2021. You said, "Actually advertising and holding events may be interpreted as engaging in a business activity and should not be done until you have a determination from the town." But we had a determination from the town that he could not run a business out of that location. And then you go on to say, "I caution you about taking any action that might later be deemed to be in violation of Reading zoning ordinance in advance of having a decision from the ZBA, as they could be subject to fines and penalties." So I just need to be, some clarification as to why we're even considering letting him run any sort of event out of there that's a business. He's charging 3, up $250 to $325. It's clearly a business. So why is that being allowed?
Well, Ray, it's not being allowed until he either files for a permit, which would go to the zoning board of adjustment, or he moves the camping out of town, which then there wouldn't be a business there.
It's still a business if he's charging people to come here and drive on our Class 4 roads.
Not sure that I can limit vehicles on Class 4 roads.
No, but you can eliminate the business.
How would I do that?
Because he's in a... Last, in a zoning area that does not allow for business to be run. It's a residential zone that he's in.
But it does allow a home-based business.
That is not a home-based business when the people are going to be coming here to our town. It now becomes a town-based business with people who are going to be coming here. The, I didn't... I don't know exactly what the difference between the $250 and the $325 is on this site, but I expect that the $250 is without camping and the $325 is probably with camp. I don't know that for a fact, but that's one possibility.
It's two days or three. I'm not sure.
So again, if the town has previously determined that he cannot run a business out of his house, I don't understand why we can't go back to your letter that says advertising and holding events may interpret as engaging in the business.
Well, you would need to look at the definition of a small business, Ray, in the zoning ordinance versus a home-based business. It would be no different for him to set his home and take reservations to go on a tour in Vernon or Reading or Plymouth or Bridgewater, where all the places that you mentioned are in there, and take money for that, as it would be for an attorney to set his home and issue a response and get paid for the hours if they work. What would be the difference?
Except I think that the piece that we need to revisit is if goods and services are being consumed on-site. So if this becomes a headquarters for a refueling station or a base camp to then go off, and there are a number of cars parking there, there are people picnicking, people, you know, using it as a parking lot. There is some sort of goods and service. Him as a tour guide, orientation leader, whatever. It's not just out of his home office. He's using this address on his website as a place to congregate. And there are a number of other events that are through the summer and through the fall that he's also advertising, some with camping, some not.
Right.
So...
But the event in question right now is the Southern Tour.
But if that is the base camp, and people are coming and going, they're going to be going to Bridgewater, they're going to be going to South Woodstock, they're going to be going to Plymouth. But they are perhaps using this place as a stopping grounds to get perhaps maybe their next guide, their next tour, their next directions, their next scavenger hunt.
But we don't know that. That's why we need some information from him.
But that would be an example of a goods or services being consumed on-site.
But if no one comes there, if they camp in Springfield, and he goes there, then that's mutual.
Well, we're just assuming a lot that he is going to pivot so quickly on this business model that he has been advertising for months. I think that that's a lot of speculation.
The whole thing's got a lot of speculation in it. I'll give you that.
Yeah. One other point I'd like to make regarding camping. I submitted this to the board at the last meeting. It is a state requirement regarding camping. And it says, "Any lot with four or more campsites on a lot that are occupied or made available to be occupied for vacation or recreational purposes by camping units such as tents, yards, teepees, cleanets, camping cabins, and recreational vehicles requires a permit." So... Again, you know, I mean, I just don't understand why we're giving him so much leeway. He's got to have, he's got to get the message that we don't want any of his activities happening here in Reading. He's got to get that message loud and clear, and I don't think he's getting it.
This is actually just a friendly conversation at this point. We have no quorum.
Given the fact that he's going ahead and advertised that it's public, and he has no permit at the moment, can he be cited as being in violation?
That would be a question to the attorney, Jack. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, you stated that in your January letter of 2021, you stated that it would be in violation.
I mean, realistically, from the, if the time is ticking, how could a conditional hearing, a use hearing or a variance hearing be warned enough? And this meeting is not, it's not a meeting. So April, and then the event in question is in May, correct?
That's what it's advertised for. So from the time that the ZA presents the ZBA with a completed application, I think the ZBA has, you know, as well as I do, 120 days to warn the meeting. And then the meeting has to take place, I believe, within another 45 days. So it's a long, it's a long process, and probably longer than a May event.
Right.
So it would be tricky to hold any kind of hearing for conditional use prior to the event.
Absolutely. But if he did apply and you didn't answer, then we could revert back and say, "Look, you applied, but you applied to, like, so the answer's no."
Yeah. At this point, just to clarify, there is no application for me.
There's no application.
It's really just responding to community concerns around the advertising.
Just to go one step further about my question. Is there a process to go ahead and ask the lawyer, the town lawyer, and, you know, actually?
I had that conversation today, Jack. Where do we go on the 10th if he doesn't do anything?
So you're waiting for the 10th?
Right.
Okay.
And there are, there is a methodology if he does nothing. If he does something, then we react to that. And I think probably doing nothing is where we're at, but we'll have to wait and see.
Was there a time stated on this deadline at the 10th? I'm just wondering if you were saying if nothing is happening by the time the Select Board meets, that's when you'll announce what's going to happen?
He was given until the 10th to respond to us regarding the letter that I sent.
And the Select Board meeting is at evening?
Yeah, the Select Board's at evening, but the Select Board is not involved in this.
And was that, was that a courtesy to him? I mean, was, is there a reason why that?
We basically gave him a week.
Okay.
My question is, if someone were to come to the Select Board meeting and ask you that question in a bubble meeting, would you be able to respond at that time? Or does it have to be after midnight on the 10th before you can make a?
I guess my answer at that point in time would be either I have this or I have nothing at this point in time. You know? There was no, there was no hour deadline on it.
Any comments from the online?
Yeah, I have a comment. If, in the 10, as of the 10th, he does not respond, yet the posting is still on his website. I mean, that may be looking ahead too far, but what happens then?
If he doesn't respond by the 10th, Jane?
Right, but the posting remains on his website for the excursion to happen.
Well, that's what I discussed with the attorney today, and we'll take it from there if there's no response.
Okay.
I discussed the two options we gave him, plus no option, plus no response at all.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks like we're in a holding pattern until the 10th.
Till the 10th.
For the next piece of the puzzle.
Bob, will you be notifying Eve, Stacy, and myself after the 10th about what you heard? Can you let us know?
I can notify you what I had at that time. I either have nothing, or I have a permit application, or he's removed camping from the website. It will take a day or two for our action to kick in. And so I wouldn't want to speculate on where we're going at that point in time.
Okay, just like?
Soon as there's action, I can let you know.
Please, thank you.
If you're going away on the 10th, I was thinking of April.
10th of April.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going away on the 10th. Oh, good.
Sorry.
Hi, Bob. This is Garfield. Bob, this is Garfield. Thank you. I just want to reiterate what Ray said. I mean, nothing's changed in the neighborhood. We don't want this activity. And, you know, so people I've spoken to, we're going to take every action that we need to. And if we're before the environmental court, you know, we're going to do it. So, you know, seems like a waste of time, but that's what we have to do. That's what we're going to do.
Well, that's what we have given him so far, so I'm not sure I can change that today.
I mean, at the end of the day, everybody who wants to have business use in the town needs to follow the zoning code. So it's not a question of what we do or don't want. Subjectively, it's what the code permits. And if there's a way that this is done under the code, that's one issue. If it's not within the code, then that's another situation, which sounds like you're managing.
Right.
I don't know if it's pertinent, but just a general question. As you said, that you might be limited to to regulate activity on Class 4 roads. Is there, is there a way for the planning board to see if that problem can be alleviated by, you know, in some way regulating activity on Class 4 roads?
Well, it's a great question. There is a Class 4 road, there's a road ordinance.
That's correct. It's a soil ordinance.
It is a soil.
So then I go back, so then I go back to your question. Then why can't we limit his activities?
The highway ordinance has a lot of information in it that is governed by statute. I don't know about the Class 4 road data, but that's been in effect since ordinance was adopted the first time. And we would have to go through the same procedures of changing the ordinance as anybody else would. So timing may be an issue. It may not be an issue. But we'll discuss that after the 10th.
If the Select Board would entertain an update to the highway ordinance, is that something that the Planning Commission would work on a draft and present to the Select Board?
No, it's done solely by the Select Board normally.
When I first moved here, we used to close, the town used to close all the gates on the Class 4 roads until June 14th, which is...
No, it was the 15th of May, right.
Okay, I thought I understood it was, the state regulation was until 15th. Whatever the date is, we don't do that anymore. There is still a gate at the bottom of the Class 4 section of Kittredge pasture road that could be closed and locked.
Are you talking about by Brown Schoolhouse?
No, I'm talking about by Dave Appleton's. There's a gate right there.
Yeah, the one at Brown Schoolhouse, somebody has wrecked. They, obviously, it was obviously shut, and they used something to pull it open. It looks like a V now, and been torn off the hinges. So that one won't close. And I think that was put up there by the State of Vermont to, because they had so much property up there, they were large. And I think they did it, the town did not do it. Either the state did it, or some people of that way did it. And everybody was supposed to have a key. Every landlord was supposed to have a key. So I don't know who tore it apart. It's been, it's been torn down for years. It's still there, but it's in pretty rough shape.
I do know, because I reread it again this afternoon, the town plan has some aspirations for the recreational uses of the Class 4 roads in Reading. And it's probably worth a read if anyone's interested in that. And there is a highway ordinance in Reading, which maybe could be updated to preserve those for more uses. I think the Planning Commission would be happy to take a look if the Select Board wants any help.
Well, one thing you have to remember that... Well, one, one thing you have to remember, the select board has to. Support every resident in town, not just a small group that don't want uh an issue. So we have to be careful about what we do with our ordinances. Cause it affects, basically it affects everybody in town. We rather.
For sure. I I think the town plan does a good job of describing kind of the greater community of uses for the class four roads, which. Maybe are getting precluded as they get more eroded down to the ledge.
I'll take a look at that.
You know, the riders, the hikers, the.
I'll take a look at that. Also send a copy of that, whatever uh section that is to the attorney. And go from there.
Okay. Other, there's a nice opportunity for questions if anyone has any.
Is this in in general or related to four nineteen Bailey's Melso Road?
This is, that is the subject property.
Okay.
Our next meeting is gonna be Monday, April seventh. Uh and hopefully we will have that quorum then. Um that is the, the first Monday of the month is typically the planning commission. Zoning Board of Adjustment, that does get changed based on availability, but also this week it was because of voting in town hall is not available on this Monday. Which is why we're holding the meeting on.
Just so you know, uh he is not available on the seventh.
Okay.
If you need, I can write up whatever the status is at that point in time and give it to you. But if it's on the seventh, I I'm just tied up already.
Um if you, if you could, you know, get set, submit a report to Jane, I guess, as zoning chair, that would be great. I think there's a lot of interest and a lot of concern, so people don't wanna be caught by surprise and, you know, feel as if they're uninformed.
I will let you know where everything stands in on the seventh.
Um, great. Um, we do. Need to make some recommendations for nominations to the select board, uh but we can't do that tonight. In a voting way. I am willing to continue on as um. Chair of the Planning Commission, as a member of the Planning Commission and the ZBA. Jane, I don't know if you are willing to carry on?
Yes, I'm willing to carry on also.
Okay, so I don't know if the select board needs to have a formal vote from us before you consider that on Monday.
No.
Um but we are both willing and able to carry on.
Stacy is already uh on there until twenty twenty nine, uh which is four years. Uh if we go to a three member boy, it would normally rotate every three years. So if you wanted to, as I was telling you before we started the meeting, if you wanted, if one person wanted to take a two year term just to get this back in cycle. And one person takes three year term, which would be twenty seven and twenty eight, and then Stacy would be twenty nine.
Um I think either Jane or I would be willing to take either the two or three year term. I have no preference. Jane, if you have a preference?
No, no preference.
Um and this isn't a vote because we can't, but this is why I think the select board should consider. Decreasing the size of this planning commission and ZBA to three unless and until we get two more volunteers. And if anyone would like to join this process, um please, let me know.
Just write us a short note, email or whatever, for all of that and we'll take it up. Uh it's not on your agenda, but. At the top of it, at the top of the uh agenda, there's changes to the agenda, so we can put it on, so we make a formal vote.
Okay. This would be the part of the agenda if it were a meeting where it asked for other business. Any other comments or uh observations anyone wants to make?
Is this general discussion, general discussion, or are we still on Tracy?
I think it can be whatever you want it to be, Mark.
No, I was just wondering if there is some sort of update in terms of the conditional use. Uh hearing and variance hearing for the whole of our foundation. It's been quite, quite some time.
It has been. Um I'm gonna let Jane answer that since it's a zoning issue. Jane, did you hear that? Oh, she's gone.
Yeah, I thought I heard. Go on, say it again, Mark. I'm sorry.
Just wanted to get a status of the conditional use hearing and variance hearing for the whole our foundation. It's been quite, quite some time.
Yeah, it has. Um we're still waiting for. The state to supply us with their information, which they haven't yet. So that's where it stands.
Has there been any sort of direct contact from you to the state to ask where they are if, if no one is asking them for? A request, perhaps, that you don't feel like they need to respond?
No, there hasn't. And I think that's because of. The calls called the state in. So I don't think it's our um. I don't think we need to go there. I'll let, I will wait till I hear something. I assume that they will get back to me. When they can, I don't think it's a dead issue. And we'll let you know.
I would, I would respectfully request if you would, whoever your state person contact to say, where are we in this process to then?
I don't, I don't have a state person contact. I don't.
So this is just, so this is just turning into a. Uh 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 solely a state issue. It has nothing to do with our zoning ordinance and burns and.
Well, that's what we will, that's what we're waiting to find out, how uh. Uh much say the state has over our local regulations. So I'm not, it's not that we're letting anything just pass by. It's, you know, if the state determines something, that's probably the term determination that we have to go with.
Unless your zoning ordinance is more restrictive, then in that case, the zoning goes back to the town. I'm just, it's, it's a very odd thing. I I can understand where you're coming from. I it's, I've never seen anything like it, so just.
Jane, is it worth uh a reach out to the applicant to ask if they have been back in touch with the state? Since the state canceled on their appearance because of the floods?
Um, okay, I will do that.
And and just for the record, there were people at the meeting, at at the hearing meetings who had expressed. Concern about flooding and adverse effects of the berms and the flood wall. So just in the interest of. Um in the interest of, you know, respect for these interested parties, it would be. It would be nice to have some sort of update because their concerns are just as warranted. As the concerns of the applicant and the state. So I I I would like to.
Absolutely, their concerns, their concerns are, you know, everybody's concerns are being heard and weighed. And then, you know, taking into account the zoning and, you know, what the state comes up with.
It's just that if people are concerned about flooding and safety. Um. Their concerns might be. Just. Thank, thank, thank you for, thank you for.
Me, I'm not, I'm not making light of it. I'm not siding one way or the other.
I understand. It's just that there's, there's just the optics that the clock is running out and I don't know. If 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 the ball is in the state's court, maybe they're trying to run out the clock or they're just waiting for people to go home and get tired of this and. Um there are people who are concerned about it.
I think it's worth, worth a reach out to the applicant to see where the process is. As I recall, the last place is. The last place we left this was there was a hearing and then there were the huge floods the day before the hearing and the state cancel their.
Right.
Participation.
One up north.
Yeah, so let's uh. Let's reach out to the applicant and and see where things stand. If that works for you.
Yes, I will do it.
Other things? Once we can wrap up this non-meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Participating in the civic process.